Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order today for our March the fifteenth special meeting. First order on the agenda would be a call to order. We're not going to have budget discussion tonight. We'll go to county administrator items.
Why aren't we going to have a budget discussion?
Why? We don't have anything really to discuss.
Why not?
Because they haven't even approved the budget yet.
Really?
Yeah, we won't get that until sometime in April.
I'll bet you we'll get it the next day.
All right, Mr. Tadlock, you go ahead.
All right, um, next item we have is regarding the health insurance. The board did ask for some additional information related to part-time employees. Mary did reach out and to the different department heads and was able to get a quick survey back, and it was basically one out of forty-three individuals that are part-time was interested in health insurance. So, really, if we include part-time members at this point, it would hurt our overall percentage of participation.
We would drop below the, what, seventy-five percent?
Seventy-five percent.
And you still don't know what the implications of that would be? Besides cost?
Cost, but basically, everything that we have now are just guesstimates. Because until you actually do your open enrollment and have those final figures, you don't know exactly what employee is going to pick which plan and so forth. So, and the school division has, instead of classifying the bus drivers as part-time, they have classified them as full-time employees, and they're working through that process now. So, really and truly, we don't need to consider part-time employees, just like we have in the past. We have not included them on our health insurance. So, with that, if the board wishes, the document that I provided to you all at the last board meeting showing the rates and keeping the employees at the level that they're currently paying, there is a nine-point-nine percent increase in that best guesstimate that we can come up with is that it would be an additional cost to the county of about a hundred thousand dollars, ninety-eight thousand dollars. I don't know if you have any specific questions related to that, and that would just be for full-time employees.
And full-time county employees who are not school employees?
This sheet here is just for county employees. The school division has their own, they can do their own rates, but I will say they're pretty similar to what we're proposing. The high deductible plan is a little bit different than what we have. We don't have anybody on the high deductible plan currently.
So, you say ninety-eight thousand more?
Yeah, it's approximately ninety-eight thousand. And there again, that's best guesstimate that could fluctuate. And that's based off the numbers that we currently, currently have.
Board got any more questions?
No. You requesting action to, about these rates?
I am. We do have to get this information to local choice by the beginning of April. It was April first, but they have, was it April fifth that they came back with? But that's still before our next board meeting, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve these rates with the ninety-eight thousand-plus increase.
All right, got a motion, they have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any other discussion?
And that is, just for the record, that is for, with no change to the employee contribution cost.
Okay. All right, no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
What else you have, look?
Um, and just to follow up with that, if I could get a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-four local choice renewal rates for the COBA rates presented with the full premium cost to the eligible participants.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, a second, any other discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye.
At the last board meeting, the board had discussed whether or not to change the meeting time from five-thirty to five, and we did some research. Morgan pulled the ad that was advertised back in January, and by code, we do have to advertise the time, so if that's something that the board is looking to do, we do need to advertise the remaining dates at the new time.
All right, what's the pleasure, board?
Yeah, I, I think we should move to five, that, that'll help, uh, that'll help all that, as far as the public that I talk to.
It's gonna help us one month, and it's gonna hurt us the next, it's...
One way, though?
Yeah.
Is that gonna make it more difficult for people to get here by having it at five instead of five-thirty? Some people to get off at four-thirty or five, they're still gonna be able to get here in time? That's the only thing I'm looking at.
I think it'd impact them. Some people get off at four-thirty, some people get off at five, and...
They won't be able to make a five o'clock meeting, you know?
You know, I remember when we had it in the mornings, and that's the reason we moved it to the afternoon.
Yeah.
Nobody can tend that, working-class person can't tend that.
Yeah, that's what Ronnie and I made that motion, the very first meeting we did, because that wasn't fair to anybody.
And are we looking at doing the same thing again?
Well, the public hearings is more, but I'd like the people to have the availability to be there at seven, and the afternoon sessions, if the reports and stuff, I mean, everybody still ought to have the availability of that, too. But I just hate where we're running over and making these people wait for the seven o'clock public hearings.
There's some, some days we're running pretty close on schedule with public comment put in between the, the five-thirty and the second, I mean, and the seven o'clock part, that kinda pushes us out a little bit.
Move, uh, well, we have a closed session, move that to the end behind the public hearings.
Always put closed, that's probably, we ought to do, put that to the end of the meeting, start it. That would give us twenty, twenty minutes, forty minutes time, man, for public, I mean, for public comment.
I would probably say keep the closed meeting where, I mean, the closed meeting session where it is, but if we're running long, then shift it over. Because sometimes, it may not be as much in the afternoon.
Yeah, sit there, look at each other for forty-five minutes.
Yeah, and that, that's not good either.
Uh-uh, that ain't gonna be...
But I think that would be, because that's generally our time, anyway.
Yeah.
So, I, I would, I mean, somebody make a motion, but I'm willing to just keep it as it is, with the understanding we can move the closed meeting portion afterwards if we need to.
Well, if it don't change it, do we need a motion?
No.
All right, what's, what's y'all's pleasure?
That's fine with me.
I'm just talking.
Well, there are other things certain people could be talked to. We don't need to have stuff read to us that's given to us in our hand. And I'm talking about the school system. They give us that brochure, I don't need it read to me, what I've got.
Can't read, can you?
I can read. And there's some things I can read, and some things I really don't care to read either, in anything, but I don't need to be read to. When the public is doing their comments, I don't have a problem with that, because that's not prepared. But when you've got something prepared, give it to us, and if we're not acting on it then, then we can do that at our own time, speed everything along, and then we can discuss the things that are important. So, that's, that would help some.
A lot.
Oh, yeah, I know. I was being generous.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, I can be generous. Any other comments?
How about if we just leave it like it is for a couple of months and, and work within the schedule?
Yeah.
Changing the public comment and the closed sessions, whatever we gotta do, we can do within the meeting to see if we can regulate the time, and if it don't work, we'll come back and maybe revisit starting it early.
And then there's some comments, if they're repetitive month to month, they have a right to do it, but...
Well, no, not really. Or no, that you don't have to have a public comment, really.
No, you don't have to, but I, I don't have a problem with that.
It's a good idea to have one, though.
Yeah.
What?
It's a good idea to have it, even though you might not want to hear everything. If it's over and over and over, you might not want to hear it, but...
Well, that, but then they, then stuff that's gonna be basically the same thing previous months, you can present something in writing, which would help. But I would, I'd ask Mr. Tadlock to see if you can look around, though this is not a big priority thing, to see what other localities do about public comments that are same thing over and again, is there any way to be a, if somebody else is having restriction on it, fine, but listen, I, I, you know, we know some of these comments, and I'm, I'm not, you know what I'm talking about, but I, I don't care hearing it, I don't mind hearing it, but look, that takes up, that's generally four or five speakers a mo, a week, I mean, a month. And you figure four minutes, that's twenty minutes right there. You're almost seven-thirty before you even get going into any other commentators.
Well, Tom, what if we were, just say, what if we ended up on one day, we start the public comment at six-thirty? I'm just, just picking a number. And we got three, three or four public hearings here, it's starting at seven o'clock. And you got a list of people here that wanna, they wanna speak on public comment, and it's already seven o'clock. What if we just cut it off and tell them we're gonna, we gotta hold the public hearings, and we'll finish up on public comment after that? Wonder how that would work? I wonder how that would, would sit with everybody?
You're not gonna make everybody happy.
Oh, no, you, if you're lucky, to make fifty percent happy.
If we keep it to four minutes and keep it...
Hard to keep it to four minutes, Jim, when you keep calling on them, and they don't pay any more attention than you and the man in the moon.
Yeah, most of them will, though. I mean, if, uh...
Some of them, some of them, you know, they get reading, and they don't listen to anything else. I know they got their mind on what they're doing, and you, you know, I respect that part.
But, uh, if we keep it to four minutes, and the majority of them, when you say time is up, but...
Yeah, most of them go ahead and stop.
They go ahead and do it.
Or else it takes them another thirty seconds to finish up, so...
I think maybe when you open your public comment, you can remind them at that point in time that they will be given four minutes.
Yeah, we're just gonna start reminding them each time, even though on the sign-up sheets, it says they got four minutes.
Right, and they, they don't pay, a lot of people don't pay.
I know, they, nobody reads all that. If they do, it's, it's gone.
They don't even read which thing they're supposed to be signing up for, anyway.
I know, I know.
I know. And I sure wish they'd start printing, so you could read the handwriting.
And you used to laugh at me because I couldn't read the names.
You got, everybody, everybody who's been chairman had that laugh.
And you laugh at me now.
Yeah.
But I just, you get the first letter, and the rest of it, you can't see it, you just can't make it out, and you make it to last. So, what, what can you call them?
Would you put that on the sheets to please print your name?
It's on there.
It says print?
Yes.
Maybe they need to be read, too.
Maybe that's what I do, is, uh, gotta give something, gotta give logic or something else to read.
It sounds like me, if somebody spent less time on it laps, and, and let it have a read, it would have all...
Well, let Drew read that one. We could let Morgan, since she's the one getting the type of sign-up sheets, that'd be even better. She's in charge of all that. You don't like that, do you? Oh, let's look at something a little bit different next month, let's see if we can tell them how much time they have, and tell them to make sure that they, uh, print their name on his sheets instead of writing it or scribbling it. And I'm just as bad as everybody else, I scribble, too, you can't make it through some of my writing.
Yeah, I know that.
Get a set of lights, like...
You gotta agree with me, Jim.
Yeah, I know, I know that.
I think it's VMRC that's got a set of lights, uh, one of them, they go to green, yellow, and red, and when you got the thirty seconds light, it goes from green to yellow. They know that somewhere, like right over top, Tommy's head on it, bench.
What would that cost, Robert?
Uh, having practiced law, sometimes you had appellate cases, they had those lights right in front of you where your papers were. You would see it move. And sometimes when we've had, had to speak before, you know, debates or whatever, they'd hold up cards, too, showing you the timeframe. Get Morgan to hold up a card, thirty seconds.
You could just hit, hit the table like a judge, I'd do it.
He's chairman, he don't have a gavel, though.
I got a hammer and a block of wood.
You might break that table, though.
No, I got a block of wood I bring.
Okay.
So, what do y'all want, uh, check on set of lights, check on a gavel, or what?
All of the above.
All of the above.
Checking doesn't cost anything.
No.
And see if you can also check with other, about public comments, about any possible way to limit repetitive things. I don't, I doubt it, but...
I don't know, the only thing that, I think there is a code section related to public comments that, and I'm trying to remember.
We have to have one.
I, I think we have to have one at least quarterly, if I'm not mistaken, but I'll check on that code section.
I'd hate to take that, though.
Yeah, no, I, I'm just, I, I don't think there's...
If we go to quarterly comments, you're gonna hear a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm not suggesting that we do that, I'm just...
I know, I think you're right, that's the only...
I know you're not suggesting.
I'm, I'm just trying to remember how that code section...
Yeah, I think it is quarterly. Because some of the comments they have besides some of the repetitive ones are very valuable. They bring up some issues that we're unaware of.
Mm-hmm.
And that serves a vital public function. So, anyway.
Yeah, you pick up a lot of information on these comments.
And maybe just have public comment roll right after either closed meeting, or if we move it over, then there'll be the next item after approval to check register or something.
Then check register approval, that doesn't take many minutes.
No.
Closed meetings are the one that usually take some time, and we could always...
But then, then your time, you put it in the agenda, people are, just put it after a check register, and don't put a time for it, and then public hearing at seven.
Is that doable, look?
Yeah, we're looking to some options there.
Yeah, look at it, I mean, we got, the agenda is the last thing you have to worry about before a meeting, anyway, other than the advertised pieces.
I just have closed meeting items from the last meeting that we didn't have a opportunity to get to.
Before we go to closed meeting, I'd like to bring up one thing for, to be looked into. I, I know we got the email, and I forwarded some about the radio system not working, and then I asked Jennifer about the "I am responding," and it was presented here in the board, of a dire need for it, and the board approved "I am responding," but my question to Jennifer, if a, if a responder, whether it's fire or police, or us, EMS, pushes "I am responding," do they get it? And they said, yes, but the problem is, they would have to go to a separate screen to see that, and you, well, you know, anyway, I won't go any further. But they said they are working, or considering, or looking into a separate computer, a separate screen. I would ask Luttrell to check with Jennifer to find out what needs to make that happen, because that's December, here it is, three months past that, and given the radio issues we have, because one of the things she said in her email was, may not even get a tone at all. And if the, and, because I can tell you with "I am responding," sometimes I am getting a, I am responding message before the tones go off. I got almost to the point one day this, either in the last week, first this week, almost got on the radio, do we have a call? It was that long a delay. So, but you can, I mean, a member can, and I know the fire departments are doing it more on "I am responding," like, you used to hear Philip Keys or Six Hundred, you very seldom hear Six Hundred on the radio anymore. He's using "I am responding," I'm sure. So, just look in to see what can be done to make that happen, given the radio issues we're having. If it's a monitor, that's cheap, if it's another...
Well, are you getting the, the message audio on all the calls?
I don't pay any attention to that. I have listened...
Half of them, I have no audio to it at all.
I can't say I'm surprised.
No.
Is that, is that on the radio, or is it on that app?
It's on the app.
Is it on the app that phone them?
I'm talking about the one from the sheriff's department, they send it, send a text. About half of them, anymore, you don't have any audio with it.
I thought they were gonna do away with the old app and just use the "I am responding," and that's something we need to check into, because I'm, I'm like you, I don't, some of them I don't get.
Yeah, but you get it on some, and some you don't, so it's, you don't get the address anymore, I guess that one, who's responding, the address doesn't come over anymore.
On "I am responding," it does.
I heard you said, but the other...
The other one is gonna go away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did they sign, did they put the app on your phone, fine, responding?
No, I don't have that, and I just got the old one, I used to have, I had to.
Yeah, they've, they've done away with that one. You'll get the voice piece, and if you did email, you get that, but you do not get anything more, like the address and the mapping possibility. You have to go to, get the app, "I am responding" to do that. And that also, that also gives you the incident number on there, too, which you used to get the other way.
Right, but no, it's just that, you know, it's something that hasn't been discontinued, I don't think, what I'm talking about, the audio part, because you get it on some calls, you get a four or five in a row, then it's a scepter of four.
But that's Safe Alert, uh, it works great on "I am responding," if you put that app on your phone, it works great.
We did, um, that Safe Alert, or that Exogen is the company, and we just renewed that, just so that there wasn't a gap between "I am responding" and Exogen. We didn't want to terminate it too soon, so the timing of it was not the, the greatest. So, we did go ahead and renew that for one more year. I think it was like eight-twenty-five or something like...
Given the issues, it's not a bad idea, because right now, we have "I am responding," but it's not fully workable in there, because apparently, they can't do it without doing the separate screen or whatever.
And, and that was the intent, by renewing that, was just so there wasn't any gap there, so...
But just, let me...
It's a lot of time, sometimes, that goes by between the dispatch and, they had an accident, I was, I think it was around two or three o'clock in the morning, this last week, up at Horsehead, Horsehead Lane, I think they said, and three-sixty, and had a pole, and I heard a call of deputies, and told them about it. And I bet it was three minutes before either the tone went out or anything to the fire Because there was a man there, evidently come up on accident, he said they were taking stuff out of the truck, carrying it over, hiding it in the woods.
No. Yeah, I, I asked Jennifer about using "I am responding," you can say you're responding in whatever, where you're going to the scene, or to the building, or whatever. Yeah, she says, yes, we're able to see that, we are under process of getting another computer for that, and we approved this in December. Uh, I can let them know to monitor that, however, it is on a computer with other systems-slash-software that we use for dispatching. The dispatchers have not been shown this system yet, as I was awaiting to show them once we had it installed.
Has Jennifer talked to you about a computer? All right, I'll get with her.
So, I mean, we, we spent three months on a program that was supposed to help some of the issues, and now with the radio issues, it, it's critical, so whatever, I mean, a new computer is not that expensive.
Do you have any in stock?
Uh, we've been swapping out the laptops, and we've got some of the old ones that we can get for, for...
Oh, you got...
We're doing that for EMS right now.
Or even if it's something temporary, till we can get something new, just so you get something up quick.
Yeah. Then they gotta train them on the system, since they hadn't been trained before.
We'll check into it.
Yeah, but I, once I saw that email, that was, I mean, I looked, went back and found their minutes when we approved it last December.
Was that, say, one of the emails we got, that they had some visible damage to one of the microwaves?
Yeah.
What kind of damage was it, was it a bullet hole, nothing, was it?
I, I don't know, I, the email that you all received was the first time I was aware of it.
I just wanted to see if they had visible damage, so...
Unless, unless it was a wind, and it blew some debris and hit it, but who knows?
Yeah. I just wondered, you know, if all this other stuff going on these power stations and stuff. Have they fixed it yet, have they had a chance to?
Haven't gotten an email that things have been repaired.
Loads of gale every day, I mean, I don't guess they ain't climbed it, I think.
I don't think I'd want to be a fan, I guess.
No.
I like this.
And looking, I looked at the winds all next week, same way.
Northwest wind was blowing the water up today, too.
It was, it tied, it high as it was yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, tide low day.
That's all I had.
Uh, meeting lights started at about thirty-six bucks and go up.
And you gotta have a timer, too.
Yeah, timers are anywhere from about fourteen to twenty bucks. You get one eight inches, is about fourteen, sixteen bucks.
Can you have them sync together, the, the timer with the clock?
I haven't looked at that part, but I'll leave that up to Robert.
All right.
I'll see what I can do.
So, it's not, it's not a whole lot of money. Uh, timer clock, visual timer clock is nineteen bucks. You got them digital, you got them, the lights with alarm on to them.
Don't please be gonna put it over my head, don't dare do that.
Be a good spot right there.
No, put it over yours.
And, uh, I don't know, but, uh, we'd look at it, that's all I can say, I just had a minute, and I just thought I'd look.
Yeah, I think the most I would say would have to be done by yourself as chairman, Morgan, Robert, or whoever, is when they get up and start speaking, you'd only have to push it, and that would start the clock, and then it's tied into the light.
Tied into the light.
One button that needs to push, not multiples.
Yeah.
So...
Right now, I pull up the stopwatch, and it started on a four-minute timer.
Yeah.
And you hear the little tone going off, but no one pays an attention, it's not loud enough.
No.
If I could amplify that, that might be good enough.
Yeah, but that still requires a whole lot of work, that has to be done by yourself or somebody else.
Yeah.
But, yeah, like Ronnie said, a light right here, can, people can see it, and that's a standard practice in some things.
Mm-hmm.
And if that helps speed the meetings along, on, regardless whether it's public comment or a public hearing, it won't hurt.
Yeah, all of them got four-minute time period.
Yeah.
Anybody got anything else?
I just had some questions on the audit, and I can email those to Luttrell.
Oh, we're gonna, the audit's got a lot of questions into it. Luttrell's been, I've been bugging Luttrell about it, he's been giving me a lot of answers. I guess he's tired of hearing from him.
I bucked him a little bit, too.
So, if you want to ask him now, Jimmy, that's fine.
I was just, on page one-fifty-seven, and I'll be quick, um...
What page?
One-fifty-seven. Yeah, paying the invoices, it's just appeared that some bills were paid, and there were no invoices for the, for the bills. Did I read that, hear that correctly from the report?
Yeah, that, that was on the school, uh, school side.
And I guess my question is, have, since, since they've already paid, have... have those invoices been matched up with those expenditures? And for the invoices or for the bills that were paid, overpaid, you know, did, was it money, did money come back to the school budget or did they receive a credit? I mean, you read into this, it's, you know, it's, it's not a very good practice to pay a bill and not have an invoice for it. And I just need to make sure that everything lines up. You know, if they paid for something, we need to make sure we got an invoice to match up to it. And, uh, and on page one fifty-six, uh, evidently it was, uh, issue with the treasurer's office and the school board, um, in reconciling of the total school fund expenditures processed by the county treasurer. I think if you look at the cause, that's, that's kind of a disconnect of, of between how the school board does things and how the treasurer knows things. It's how can that be reconciled so the treasurer has all the proper information that she needs to make sure it's all reconciled on, on the county's behalf? We shouldn't have those issues. And, you know, I, I'm, I'm sure it's gonna be more questions that come by, from the public when this gets out and people start reading it, but it definitely doesn't look good to be paying invoices and, or paying bills and don't have invoices.
That shouldn't be done at any level.
No.
An individual, but especially government should never pay anything without an invoice, purchase order, or some way to match it up.
No, it shouldn't. It shouldn't, but it was done.
Basically, that's all I got on that. It's.
Yeah, we could follow up on, uh, with the auditor on the page one fifty-seven, uh, items related to the, the invoices and what they, what, if they determined anything on, uh.
And, and I understand they, they required corrective actions on the school board's behalf. And, and they've come up with an action plan.
Yeah.
But to me, that, the action plan is for, for this coming year, next year. What's been done corrected, these issues here, to make sure the books and where they need to be.
No, you, you are correct. They, they did submit a corrective action plan, which was, uh, submitted.
Right.
Um, but, yeah, we can follow up with them on, on that one fifty-seven for, or on the schools', uh, side of things. And then uh, as far as the, the treasurer, I know that the treasurer has been in contact with, um, the director of finance, um, Ms. Booth and, uh, Dr. Warrow as well, so. They're, I think, trying to get that information as to what she needs, uh, reported from the school division to, uh, Ms. Booth.
I forwarded to everybody the email I got from Mr. Tadlock about the efforts of our consultant with the auditor, how much they did to help get things in shape. So you'll have that. I just sent that to you. Did we ever get a carryover figure from the school board last year?
I know that there was, um, I think it was when Jason, uh, Mr. Bellis was still, uh, here. I think he provided a number, but I'd have to go back and.
Can we get a, uh, an official carryover figure to know?
Uh.
Or is that asking too much from the school system?
Well, for, for fiscal year twenty-two.
The last fiscal year that we, the audit was on.
It's my understanding, looking at the, the audit and looking at, uh, talking to the auditor, that it was three hundred twenty-some thousand, um, additional monies that the county paid. Uh, and that was due to some of the federal funds not being requested in time. So there was no, or is no, uh, monies, carryover monies back to the, the locality.
Well, that by itself is a first. We've always had some carryover money. It may not be much sometimes, maybe less than a hundred thousand, but they spent then all their budget plus extra on the federal monies.
Plus extra. And what did they spend it on? Which category did they spend?
You don't have an invoice to find out.
I know. There's no invoices.
And if they spent monies without appropriation, what's the consequences to them for that? That's a problem.
What's the taxpayer gonna have to say about that one? I've already heard it from two, three that seen the budget.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, not the budget, but the audit. Their answer to that question was, what and when are you gonna find out about?
We've already got some taxpayers wanting a line item by line item audit of a school budget.
That's a forensic audit. That would cost a lot of money. But I can tell you, if they don't have an invoice to match an expenditure, that, that's, your forensic audit's gonna have the same report. A forensic audit goes from July the first to June the thirtieth. And every transaction is what you do. And that is, that's an expensive proposition. You're looking in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, because you've got the forensic auditor goes from year-long, and that's a long process. That'd be, that three hundred thousand probably. I don't know what a forensic audit costs, but it's an expensive thing. You, you only see those in high-level, um, like criminal investigations. The state police has a CPA who's a police officer who does things. And that takes months and months by itself. Or in major, like, uh, the, the bank in California, SVB, you know, they could do a forensic audit on that or something. It takes something like that. But it is, the fact that they don't have invoices for a lot of stuff by itself says in one sense, almost all you need to know.
Still, we need answers.
Yes, we do. To the extent we can get it.
But the problem is, I don't know if we'll get answers, because they don't usually have answers to our questions now.
We're searching for the holy grail of answers.
Well, anything else?
That's all I have.
Anyone got anything else? Well, Mr. Luttrell, I mean, uh, Mr. Luttrell, Mr. Tadlock? You wanna give us the appropriate verbiage for, uh, this closed meeting?
Yes, sir.
If we, if we don't have anything else anybody wants to discuss, make sure. All right.
Need the board, a motion from the board, um, convening closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eighty-one, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. And section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight, twenty-nine, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary or the county administrator or assistant county administrator, uh, as they are deemed necessary. And their presence will briefly need the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA section two point two, thirty-seven, twelve, F.
Don't move her.
All right, got a motion. Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll go and close meeting. Yes, we need a motion to come out of closed meeting.
Yeah, um, need a motion by the North Carolina Board of Supervisors to return public meeting and certify by a roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
All right. Have a, cut a motion.
Second.
Got a second. All right, roll call vote. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Tomlin?
Aye.
Mr. Jett?
Yeah.
All right, we have anything else you need to go over? Luttrell?
I do not. No, sir.
Do we want to close or do we want to carry over?
Did you have something come up?
Do that.
Twenty-second. Luttrell, do we?
Um, I think we had put on that sheet, uh, some additional, um, budget work sessions, uh.
Right.
The school division has set their public hearing for the twenty-seventh, so we wouldn't have the school budget by that time. Um, I'm still finalizing the county budget.
Okay.
Um, but if the board would like to schedule a, um, work session, a budget work session, and have departments come in and start presenting uh, what they're requesting for the budget, uh, we could start that process, but that's up to the board.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to see us do that, while we can get started.
That's what's normally done, you know.
Well, since tomorrow is the sixteenth, I guess that kind of cuts that one out, don't it?
Plan and commission more tomorrow.
Plan and commission tomorrow.
You'd had all, the twenty-second as a possible.
I think I had the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-second, twenty-ninth.
But the twenty-ninth, we have the other meeting, so that would be out.
How, what?
The EMS meeting on the twenty-ninth.
That's at six-thirty.
How about the twenty-third or thirtieth?
I can do twenty-second, no problem.
Huh?
I can do the twenty-second.
Good with me.
Good by me. Yep, I'm good.
Five o'clock. Good luck, Luttrell.
I'm sorry.
Five o'clock is fine with me. I, it's March twenty-second, next Wednesday time.
Yeah, that'll work for me.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
All right. All right, we'll get with, uh, several agencies and several departments that I know would like to come in and talk to the board, so.
I need a motion.
I move that we carry over to next Wednesday, the twenty-second at five P.M.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank y'all for coming.